Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to our June the 8th meeting. We just finished up with school year and I want to commend everybody on a job well done for this school year for our 2021 graduates. In absence of our chairman, Mr. Jason Leroy, who could not be here tonight, I, D. Barx still will be filling in and I can assure you I will not be tearing along. I will go with the agenda as outlined. So now we're going to have our prayer by Mr. Michael Williams, please.
Hi, yes, please. Heavenly Father, we're grateful and thankful for this day. Thank you for this school year. Thank you that we haven't had any serious issues with COVID and all things in this school year. We thank you for all that you've done for us and ask tonight that you continue to just let us use about your spirit for making decisions and use your wisdom and the votes that the board has to make tonight, even in the discussion. It's in the mighty name of President Jesus Christ we pray, amen. Let's stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for the prayer and for the pledge of allegiance. We're going to move on to our consent items, the agenda, the amendments from the May 11th and May 26th meetings, and our varsity cheer fundraiser, as well as the policy for revision.
One question on the the principals account, PVEIS is in there also, correct?
Do we have students or teachers also participating with that, or how does that?
With this particular fundraiser?
Yeah, with this particular fundraiser.
Now, this fundraiser Chick-fil-A called me the other day about using that and they're just going to donate it back. Um, we don't, it's not where we would, in the past, we had to help work it and be there. They're just going to come in the parking lot like they were doing at Bell's and they got, they want to come do it here and that's what I was doing for.
Okay.
Thank you. Now the time to be discussing that.
That's what we make a motion.
Now the time to be discussing.
You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question too. How effective is that fundraiser so far?
The Chick-fil-A one?
Mm-hmm.
They sold out the first time we did it. I don't know about Ms. Burke, but she did it afterwards.
But we did not, we did not sell out. We didn't make profit of that.
We, we did. It was a 10% of sales, so I can't remember how much they made. This one was just off the cuff where they called and wanted to come. So it's not, we're not going to be out anything. It's going to be.
I'm just curious if it was a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, a two hundred?
It's 10%.
10% of sales?
Yes, sir. I made, I think it was like a hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay.
I, I would have made about a hundred and fifty, but I used that money to buy what was left to feed my teachers the next day, so it was not.
And we sold out, so it was somewhere around the same. I remember it was a hundred and something.
So everybody sold out except for Ms. Burke?
No, we didn't sell out.
Oh, you didn't? Well, me as a community member, I have no idea that even happens. If I just happen to run into someone in the school, that's how I'd know about it. So you might want to figure out a different way to let the community know about it. I'm just curious though, you know, so some feedback. Thank you.
Any more questions? Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion? I need a second?
Second.
Uh, motion first by Mr. Heightman, second by Mr. Madison. All in favor? Vote four to one. Four to zero, excuse me. Vote for Jason, he's not here.
No, no.
Okay. We don't have any public participation, so we'd just like to reiterate with our public participation that we do encourage it. However, um, during the public participation, we do not address any of the issues or concerns that's brought to the board on that night. But however, within 72 hours, superintendent or someone will be getting back with the person that participates in the public participation. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
And that has been added to the handout sheet.
Okay.
So it's up there.
All right. Our financials, Ms. Buffer?
Okay, we've got our general fund. Get it. Nope. Show me the general fund.
All right.
That's the principal's. Yeah, it's the first one with it.
Got ahead of yourself. Next one, go back.
That's the principal's.
There you go.
All right, and you can see we're at 91.66% of our fiscal year complete. We only have one more month and we are looking good in our revenues. We are at 99.68%, so we have collected a little over on some revenues and still collecting and right at 100% on some. So we're, we're doing good on the revenues. You can see we're at 11.696 million. On our expenditure side, we are under on the expenditures, so that's also good. 96.3, uh, excuse me, 86.33%, so we're under the 91.66% at 11.182 million. On our balance sheet, we have cash in the bank of 3.762 million and a fund equity of 2.889 million. And that's the summary for the year, showing the 2.889 million on the general fund. Our SPOS fund continues to amaze us. That's the only thing I can say. Eighty-three thousand, three fifteen twenty-six this month. That's the most I think it's ever been, or definitely in the last 10 years. So we hope that trend continues, even though we're not sure why it's continuing. But you can see at 754,000, we're actually 36,843.06 over last year and we still have another month to go. So we are definitely doing well in our SPOS fund and we hope that people continue their buying. In our SPOS summary, you can see we've got 324,779.34 in our SPOS account at the end of May. We've got 389.776.69 in our bond tax account, giving us 714,556.03. I changed the payments at the bottom so you can see exactly what it's going to be. Do you, uh, the bond interest due on September 30th, 383.362.50. You can see we already have that money in the bank or working towards the bond interest and principal due on March 31st of 2022. And that's the 1.163 million. Capital projects, no big change, just a little bit of interest. So we have that 92,000 set aside for projects that may come up. And I need to go to the principal's. Okay. We had the first quarter, not first quarter, it's actually the third quarter of the year, first quarter of 2021. Principals account, so this is the elementary school. They started with 27,855.44, ended with 26,656.17. The middle school started with 58,105.63 and ended with 56,45.19. The high school activities, 43.336.09, ended with 37,919.24. And the athletics, 48.76.03, and ended with 30,494.03. And these were as of the end of March because we did this on a quarterly basis.
Any questions in reference to the financials?
Ms. Buffer, um, the amended budget for FY '21, would you mind reviewing that so that we can vote on it?
Okay. I sent you a note at the front of this. We amended the budget on March the 9th, 2021, and we told you then there would be more changes because the grants keep changing. So what we're doing is just changing the things that we know of that changed since that time. And that is the QBE revenue. I'm changing that to the midterm allotment and the salaries and benefits on the state grants that changed in the general fund. The special revenue funds have been adjusted to match the federal grants and a correction was made to the debt service fund because somehow I picked up a transfer twice on that and it was not supposed to be there. So, uh, so the debt service fund has no transfers going into it. It's only into the special revenue and the capital projects. So those are the only changes from the one that was approved in March.
So this is designed to be the final amendment to the FY '21 budget?
Yeah, well, I mean, it'll have to be at this point. Now, sometimes they change the grants in June, but, you know, we can't do anything about that, so we're hoping this is the final.
Any motion for it?
Yes.
For the FY '21 amended budget?
Make a motion with approval?
Mr. Madison, make a motion that we approve and I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Heightman, all in favor? Four to zero. Well, FY '22 budget?
All right, we had two budget hearings on our FY '22 budget. And from the tentative budget, I've made just a few changes. You can see I've got the summary there. Most of those figures are the same. The only changes that we changed, I eliminated a bond bus. We found out that the money that we got this year for a bus, which, you know, we talked about that, that we got it late in the year, so we'll actually spend that next year. We want, we've got a carryover. It'll be in a reserve at the end of the year. That money is all we're going to get. We're not going to get another bond bus next year. So I had to take that money out. So you can see where I took out the, um, let's see, I'm trying to look up there. Uh, the bond bus revenue, the 77,220, and then I also took out the purchase of the bus. So that actually netted us an increase in our fund balance of 32,679 on that because we do have to put part of the money with the bus, the bond money from the state in order to purchase the bus. So by not purchasing it, we're actually saving a little bit of money. I replaced the employees that were approved at the last board meeting. That was a net of $480. I changed the QBE to the, uh, we received the actual allotment sheet instead of just the estimated amount. They changed it and decreased it by $13. I wanted to change that. And then I added $2,000 to athletic supplements, which was approved by the board at the last meeting. So that with the benefits, reduced it by 25.61. So the change in the general fund from the tentative budget, which we discussed in the two budget hearings, is an increase of 30,585 dollars. And the special revenue fund, the only thing that changed, I added, uh, excuse me, I deducted from the CARES III budget to match what we are proposing for the FY '22 year. And we'll discuss that in a minute, but, uh, so I did reduce that amount by 293,13, 293,013 dollars just to keep those matched. There were no changes to the capital or the debt service funds. So those are all the changes and that is the proposed budget for '22. Any questions?
Yes, what was that 293 number? Go back over that again one more time.
Okay, um, yeah, if you remember, we've been talking about the CARES. There are three CARES, one, two, and three. The third one, which we're going to ask you to approve in just a minute, will go through 23. And what we're, uh, what I had originally put in there was more than what we're actually proposing to spend in '22. So I just wanted to get the correct amount in '22.
Okay.
Because we have to spend that amount?
Yeah, it'll be in 23. It's just, I just reduced the 22 amount to match what we're proposing for '22.
Okay.
The total didn't change.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any motion?
Make a motion with approval?
Okay, Mr. Madison, make a motion that we approve and a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? Four to zero. Next on our agenda is the CARES III budget. Buffer?
All right. So we've got a summary of the, and this is for the full CARES III. If you remember, um, we told you at the last meeting that we, the board, the board, the State Board of Education has only approved part of this now, so the 1,328,152 is the amount that they have already not approved, but they are saying we'll give you this much now and then you add to it. They'll add to it later as they approve it for whatever reason. So what we've done is tried to match that up. So we're putting in the three instructional coaches. I think we talked about those. That's the intervention and instructional specialist, uh, the gym floor at the elementary school, the classrooms in, and that's the classrooms in the gym, the floor in those classrooms. Let's make that clear what we're saying there. The terrazzo flooring at the high school, uh, air conditioning units at both schools, the halls at the elementary school, a dishwasher for the elementary school lunchroom, the, a district license for corrective reading, that's a software program that principals have requested, smart televisions across the district. Those will replace the smart boards that are already in the classroom. So it'll be a similar type thing. It'll just be a television as opposed to the smart board. A district license for accelerated reader, which is another software program. Summer school, that's this year, this summer, uh, for the high and middle schools. Laptops for the instructional coaches. The elementary school classroom flooring would start with next year's. Instructional coaches, uh, for next year. Smart televisions across the district. And that, I believe, one's elementary and one's high school, but they'll be covered in, but both schools will be covered by the time we get through 23. The I view at the elementary school, summer school next year for the high school, middle school, the PVE maintenance and disinfecting supplies, um, and then the fine arts teachers. And those last two are subject to change. Well, the entire thing is subject to change, actually, based on what the state approves and, you know, things that come up. But, but those are things that would qualify for this grant if we need them at that point. So that totals the entire amount of the grant, but we're only putting part of that in the '22 budget because we only want to put the part that we need for that year.
And we have to zero out the total number when we, I don't want to say apply for it because that sounds strange, but when we explain to the state what we want to use this for, we have to zero this out before they allow us to draw any. Now, we can always amend it, but if we don't zero it out, they'll tell us that we haven't completed the task and we get nothing. So that's why it's zeroed out. I don't want to confuse anybody. It can be amended at any time.
What's the deadline for approving this? Just curious.
I, I would guess that the deadline would be '23, and I'm not trying to avoid the question, but you have to complete this before you can draw any of it. So the sooner we complete it and the state blesses it, the sooner we can start drawing it on the 1.3. They didn't give us a deadline like that. It said for the whole package.
You had to approve it though, didn't you?
Yeah, to, yeah.
Deadline to approve.
To approve is what I was wanting. Oh, I, uh, again, I don't know that there is a deadline to approve it other than '23, but the sooner we turn it in, the sooner we can start drawing on it. Now, I know that Blakely is approved, Walton County, I think, was approved, was the last two that I saw. Did you see any more than that?
I don't know.
There's only a couple that have already gotten approved and they're still doing demos and, and trainings on this online, on how to get it approved.
Last of CARES III?
Yes, sir.
It's totally different from CARES I and II.
Yes.
We have to have a good plan and then they have to approve the plans.
But when you say getting approved, like I get the zero budget, but all we would be able to draw is just the '22 money, which is the 1.3, if it is approved.
Right.
If we voted through and we're approved.
Yes.
We can only get the 1.3 at this moment.
Right, until '23 when we can get the other half is what they're saying right now.
And you're saying the items for '23 can be amended, so once?
Yes, sir. If we decide not to go after one of these in '23 or we decide that something else is more needed, then we can change that. We can amend that.
And that's based on their scope of what falls in this?
That's correct. As an example, the parking lot we talked about does not fall in this scope. So if we put parking lot in this, they would kick it out and tell us to alter it and wouldn't approve it.
How about the fine arts teachers? What, how was that in the CARES Act now?
Originally, when we got CARES I, we were guided by our attorney to spend that on salaries and benefits as quickly as we could to demonstrate, A, need and B, demonstrate the financial loss of that 10% that they took out that year to try and cover the, uh, money at the state level. So we followed his direction and used the 3.75 for fine arts. My thought was the last thing we want to do is lose a whole department. So to me, I had more of a hold on the state to say, I'm not kicking out my whole department. So I, I identified 3.75 of our fine arts, which is a total of four. So I was trying to explain to them, this is very valuable to us. We need this. So that's why I identified fine arts as opposed to English or math.
That's kind of confusing.
It is. Of course, that got to do with CARES. I mean.
They, he told, our attorney told us to identify salaries and benefits that you would use in the 10% that they took out of our budget in the very beginning of that year. And he told us to use salaries and benefits to demonstrate how strong that loss was. So I used the salaries of our fine arts teachers to match that amount so that we could say, we're going to lose 3.75 teachers because you took this away from us. So we really need this, these federal dollars. So that's why I identified it that way.
They, they called it salary retention. And so, again, it was allowable in one and two, so we're putting it into legal, see, you know, if they approve that. But the retention of employees was one of the expenses in one and two. And we can change it. It can be changed.
No, I'm just saying, so we're going to save that much money then because we're not going to have to take it out of the fund that we paid to, correct?
I hope that's the case. Yes, sir. That's the plan.
Okay.
But we lost it, you know, when they cut our QBE money, so that's why we put it in there originally.
So we lost it and how, we just?
How do we pay them?
Well, remember, last year, the QBE was reduced by like, uh, the current year we're in, by about 600,000, remember? And then they gave us back and next year it's around 250,275. So we left that in two, those salaries, and we put it in one because that's what they told us to do, then we left it in two. So now we're saying if we need to, if they don't give us back that money next year, then we've got it in 30. So that we're not hurt.
But if they were to give it back, we would have this 300 to spend somewhere else, correct?
There's kind of a reserve in case we need it.
We need to be able to spend on what we don't spend enough.
That doesn't work with federal money. There are lots of hoops on this third one.
So we didn't lose any teachers. We didn't lose 3.75 teachers, right?
No, because we used the federal dollars to cover those people.
Okay. So what, so we, after CARES III is over, what's going to pay that money, the QBE?
The QBE is going to come back and be totally filled again the way it was before that.
It's absolutely crazy.
I'm sorry, but that's.
I'm sorry I jumped to these things.
That's the way the federal government and the state government works.
That's ridiculous. That's just mainstream.
There's just some things on here I would like to know a little more about. I mean, one being, I was, you know, the I view system for the LCS. More detail on what actually that whole system is and what is it?
We, we have that system at the high school currently.
Okay.
That's a system that allows us to adjust the heating in the air remotely or also what we use it for is to identify what we call a non-occupied building. So at 3:30 at the high school and middle school, the air and/or heat goes down or goes up based on temperature so that it's in, as an example, during the, um, heat, it goes to 77 instead of 72. So at night, it's much warmer in there and then it comes on early in the morning and cools it back off. So it helps save us some money. It keeps us from having a room or two at, say, 66 or 68 where it's temperature controlled by room, by the teacher and allows us to control all of them at once.
Can we give some justification for that, like a, a cost saving or something?
I can, I can get that, I can get that from, um, George Power, really, sure.
Can I ask the principal over there, is there a need for that?
Right now, I just go and rent a room and I just did it this afternoon. Went around the room and turned them off because the TVs are gone.
They don't turn them off when they need them?
Most of them do, but I go behind in the chat. Yes, sir. In the gym, like the gyms unoccupied. When Mr. Pratt came over the other day, I think it was set on 69 degrees because we had a bit of a bin in there and it got hot. But then we had to turn it and I said, ooh, boy, we could hang some meat in here. And we, um, turned it off. About, yeah, we turned it off because it's not being used.
And this is another one that could be rearranged if that's what we decide.
Well, that's why I was asking, you know.
Any other questions?
Yeah, dishwasher, did we already just put in a new dishwasher or no? Or did?
No, we talked about it.
Talked about it.
We talked about it, but we did not do it and this money became available. We applied for two state equipment grants to cover this and neither one of them got approved.
Okay. We did do a piece of equipment over there, but it wasn't the dishwasher.
That's correct.
How about smart television versus what we got, just out of curiosity? I don't.
Those smart TVs are instead of the old, um, smart boards. And they don't require the, uh, projectors anymore.
Wow, okay.
So you would eliminate that and it would all be in one piece and it's, it's a touchscreen as well and, and that's the newest and greatest thing.
And the bulbs for the projectors that we have are real expensive.
They are.
And it's hard to find them. Our, our systems are very old. They're like $60, some of them. The bulbs were $40 for the bulbs. And you can hardly find them for the old projectors that we have.
And, and just asking if you don't mind, so the teachers can teach their curriculum through this the same way we look at it so we can?
Uh-huh, the children can get it. It's interactive for the children. Teachers use it, um, yeah.
Actually does more than a smart board.
I was just curious.
Sure.
It's just like what we have. It's just an, an updated version so we don't have that projector hanging from the room and we don't have to buy bulbs anymore. It's all good once again.
How are those projectors? The projection TV, how old are they? 10 years, 15?
Mine, I have in our building, um, I would have to get the sheet out, Mr. Heightman, I can't remember off the top of my head, but some of them were older than others. We inherited some. When other people got new ones, they were brought over, you know, so they've been kind of swamped around. I don't know how old they are to be honest with you. But I know that, that some of them are pretty old, especially the ones that we're having trouble finding the bulb for.
Okay.
That's not so pricey.
Thank you.
And Reese, they used to come and, and work on them and that kind of thing, but they haven't done that in a long time.
There's a big need for them, apparently.
Because it would be great time for them. It is.
No more chalkboard.
We have whiteboards, not chalkboards. We have whiteboards.
Projectors are actually pretty expensive. If we approve this tonight, y'all will start the process of getting the 1.3?
Yes, absolutely.
As long as we spend it on this, we won't have to pay it back.
That's correct. And then we'll turn around it for the FY '23 and bring it back before we get to FY '23 and make sure we're still on the same page and we jump through the hoops necessary for that year as well.
All right, any other questions? With that said, can we have a motion?
Make a motion with approval?
Okay, and a second? Second by Mr. Heightman, all in favor? Four to zero.
Thank you.
We have the rental of the Buddy Buffett field.
Okay, first of all, I want to apologize. We got this one today. We normally don't accept those that late, but this one we had to because the event's coming up so fast. This one is to rent. This one is to rent Buddy Bufford Field for a gospel concert from Harst Grove Church. Now, one of the problems, and I'm just trying to help the board understand the process here. When the person goes to the principal, the principal looks it over, provides all of the cost, and then brings it to us to approve or disapprove. So, the principal followed what they're supposed to do. One of the problems that we have with this event is it's for a concert, which would put at a minimum a stage on the field. This is three weeks before our first football game. Now, in talking to Coach Humkus, which is one of the questions that was asked earlier, what was Coach Humkus's thought? His first thought was nothing should be on there but football. It's understandable coming from a football coach. Second of all, he was concerned with people being on that field as we are either in the process of applying chemicals or definitely trying to get the field back to football-level strength of the grass so that it can last through the season. There's a lot of concerns, as close as this is, to the football season. In my opinion, and it's not currently in this policy, I would ask the board if we couldn't alter this policy in the future and have this policy say something to the effect of, "You could only rent Buddy Bufford Field from, say, January 1 to May 1." And the reason I say "May" is, remember, we have graduation normally in the third week of May. So, you've got to get that field looking nice for the third week of May as well. All of that being said, you don't want to damage that field with something like a concert. Again, that's my input, my opinion. We could offer this church our soccer field as an example. No, it does not seat the same number of folks at all. But they could bring, I guess, lawn chairs, et cetera, and try and have their event there if they want to rent that. It would change their cost. Their cost would go down. But again, I'm concerned about it being on that field, my opinion and Coach Humkus's opinion. And I assured him I would share that, so...
And from the date of this event, it's like less than almost a month before it's time for our next football game?
Would be about three weeks, because it's the 13th of August is our first football game. I think that's right. Correct? Yes, sir.
13th game, yes.
Yeah, 13th of August is our first game. And again, you're going to have chemicals and stuff like that on the field, trying to get it looking as nice as possible.
My opinion on this, and it's just simple, my opinion, is that maybe we could ask them to utilize the Howard Stadium track field. Again, that wouldn't give them as much seating space, but they could actually, like you said, bring lawn chairs. Or I think in the past, we've got bleachers from the complex to...
Oh, from the rec center? That's correct. We've done that in the past as well.
For the prom?
For, yeah, we did it for prom and a couple of other events, so that's a possibility. I didn't think of that one. Sure.
Did they say how many people they were anticipating for this concert?
I can't remember the name of the person, the main event singer. Their concern was, it's supposedly a pretty big name in the gospel music genre. And they're expecting, and Buddy Bufford's maximum is 3,000. So, they're expecting a significant amount of people to attend this concert because whoever that gospel name is, and I forgot who they said, do you remember?
Look the bars.
Oh, look the bars.
So, I don't know if the soccer field would quite cut that.
Right.
Did they say, I mean, was, would only the stage be on the field, or did they?
When I talked to them today, they came to my office today. They called me yesterday, and we set it up. They, I told them we would only have to, no trucks could be on the field if this gets approved. No trucks on the field. We'd mark where the water mains are and the heads. So, that whenever the stage went up, that they made sure they weren't on that. And then that would be what was on the field, was the stage. I don't know where they were planning on putting it, the actual stage itself. But it was that there would be no vehicles, no matter what, on that field.
What about people, other than the entertainment?
Entertainment and, and I didn't discuss that with them. Their big concern was having enough stadium seats, so I was assuming, and that's, I didn't think of asking them about people on the field at that time.
It's hard to set a stage without a vehicle on that field.
And I told them that. I said, "I can't imagine if you're setting up a significant stage, not having a vehicle on there." And they said they could make it happen. But that was the first thing that I brought up with them, was not having vehicles on the field. It's currently, the only thing we drive on there is the Gator. Even the maintenance truck that was helping set up the stage for graduation and all stayed on that side of the fence. And they carried every bit of that stage back and forth. They didn't drive that on there the other night.
Well, the truck that set up the scoreboard didn't go on that field either.
There is a value associated with that field, I guess, and we need to protect it.
Yes, sir.
Bad idea. And it's kind of, kind of puts us in a bad situation. We really do need to have a little better parameters as far as, I mean, all these fields. There might be times when none of them need to be on, so... I, I think we need to, June 1 or May 1 or something, we need to, you know, concentrate hard on the field. I mean, it's our field. We don't want to put anybody else in a bad position where we're having to decide what got damaged or what didn't get damaged, you know? So, anyway, that's my opinion. I think the soccer field, if they could use it, I guess, that would be good. It won't get damaged, I guess. Won't need until January.
It would be, it would be further away from its season, let's say that.
Yeah. I would like to change the date of this, because I don't know what the date is. They won't have it on July 17th, after football season. It's going to be hot that day, probably, July 17th, 14th.
I mean, it looks like the original kind of recommendation that Mr. Barstow made. I mean, I could go along, like Mr. Hightman, I can go along with the soccer field, but I agree. I don't think we need to have it on the football field this time.
Okay. Do you want to approve it based on offering the Howard Ellis Field? Are you okay with that?
I would be fine with that.
I'm just throwing that out as an option, instead of them having to wait and come back in the July meeting, which would actually be right before or right after this event, which is way too late for them to do anything with. I'm just trying to help.
Do we need a motion for that, or do we just?
Yeah, you would have to make a motion based on offering them the Howard Ellis Field as opposed to Larry Campbell Stadium.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
What was your motive?
We're going to offer them the Howard Ellis track and field.
As a venue.
On this, on this date, can I amend it a little bit? Or they can do it on the dates that we're going to provide for future, which are what, January to May?
January to May.
Okay.
January 1 to May 1.
They're probably not going to be rescheduled this, this ceremony.
I was going basically on this, on this application, is what I was looking at. That, to me, is kind of totally different, because we need parameters for, as you said, for all of them.
I'm just giving them an option, another option.
Okay.
One more question. Are they going to charge to get in this?
I would imagine so.
Okay.
I didn't discuss that with them. I thought that was their business and not mine. I know they didn't want to run concessions. I know they're planning, at bare minimum, they're going to try to run concessions and all that. I would assume this is a fundraiser for their church.
So, what I'm hearing, our biggest issue is the fact that the damage that comes to a football field?
Yeah, I don't think they'll have it on the football field this time of the year.
And that many people on the football field. All right, so a motion has been given that we can offer them the Howard Ellis Stadium to have this event, if we can accommodate them. Otherwise, we're going to have to deny the use of them. Eric Campbell. Need a second?
And I second.
A second? All in favor?
Okay.
May I ask a question on that? With using that field, are we going to keep the same? Because when I call them tomorrow morning, is the price going to be the same to use Howard Ellis Field?
No, the price is different. It's listed in.
I have to see that part.
Okay. It would be listed under athletic field. Larry Campbell Stadium is 300. Athletic field is 2.
Okay.
And they could use the concession stand at the stadium?
For the stadium, yeah.
We are going to change. We are going to add this, the date to this.
We would have to rewrite another contract. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm not talking about that.
For future.
The future.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm going to bring that back next month with the adjustments to it, just like an adjusted policy.
Okay. Can I ask you to look at all of them?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yes. And Lynn's going to help me by adjusting all of those correctly. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is July 13th, board meeting.
I think it's board member compensation.
Oh, I skipped one? Yeah, I skipped one.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm sorry, board of education, yeah, member compensation.
This was brought up as a, as a conversation when we were over in a training in May. We had a training, a whole board training with Washington Wilks Board of Education, and a discussion came up about the amount of compensation. And ours was quite a bit lower than Washington Wilks. And I got ahold of GSBA, and GSBA gave us a list of everybody in the state as of 2019 and gave us an understanding of where everybody is at compared to Lincoln County. We also got the information based on what does the county earn, county commission earn per meeting? And what does the city council receive either permitting? Actually, theirs is paid in an annual payment. So, in that conversation, we discussed what should the board of education truly be? Because currently, it's at $50 per meeting, which is, again, quite low compared to the requirements. The, the process for this, if the board decides to, to change this, is it would go to our attorney. Our attorney would create a resolution. That resolution would be approved here in a board meeting. And then it would go to Rob Leverett, who is one of our legislative individuals in the House. He would take it to the floor, and he would attempt to get that approved. And then, once he got it approved, and in the next election, it would take place for the, the change in, in pay or an increase, if an increase was, was decided upon. So, that's basically the background on how all of this came out. I wanted the board to have an opportunity to have that conversation and to direct me what to do next. Because the first thing we have to do is identify what the board is requesting, and do you want it increased? And the second thing is, I have to take it to Cory to get the resolution done. So, that's why it's on here tonight.
Any recommendations?
Well, I mean, I'll speak up and say, you know, I think I speak for everybody up here if they want to take their turn. But, you know, each of us have our district, first of all, but we, we're not just the representative for our own district. We're the representative for the whole school district. And I think at any time, I know myself, when an individual, whether it be faculty, parent, citizen, whoever, presents theirself to us, we make ourselves available at that particular moment, if possible, whether it's at a restaurant, wherever you are. And if not, we make accommodations to a company to see what the situation is. We're not here for the money. I get that. But it does take time out of each other's day. Sometimes we have to go and travel, meet, do whatever we have to do. There's places we go. I think we need to be at least at equal to what others around us have, and that's just my opinion on it.
With that being said, are you being equal, are you talking about equal with the county commission? Or are you talking about being equal with Washington Board of Education?
Well, I mean, in the vicinity. I mean, I want to hear what everybody else had to say. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we need to be above. I'm not saying. But I think we need to be in the, in the realm of what, what's going on around us, because that is reality.
I got a question. So, this should be simple mathematics. But Miss Buffer, how much is it going to cost the district for a year if we raise our pay from $50 to $200 a month? 150 times 5, that's 600.
No, you have a few more meetings than that. If you just had the regular 12 meetings, that's 9,000 plus social security, so...
Yeah, we don't get paid, we get paid $50 per month, not per meeting.
You get paid per meeting.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Oh, so I got to pay every time I go to continuing education?
Per meeting, like this.
Oh, okay. Call me. I'll even put them up.
So, a little less than $1,000 for 12. And then, of course, you need, we have over that, like we have, like we have that budget hearing.
Yeah.
You know, we usually have a tax hearing.
Okay. I didn't know that.
A little bit more than that, but yeah.
So, how much is it going to cost total for a year?
Just around $1,000, maybe a little, say between $1,000 and $1,500, depending on, depending on the region.
Per person?
No, total.
No, that's, no, 200.
It's 150.
Times 12.
People a month, right? That's, so 50 times 12 is 9,000.
Yeah.
So, 10,000. I'm sorry. 10,000. I'm sorry. 10,000, sorry.
Okay, so 10,000.
Move, move the decimal over one.
So, do we want to take it back to the superintendent? Do we want to raise it to 200? Isn't that what we're doing? Is that what you all want to do?
Just give it a little measure. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, sir.
A motion?
Motion.
You ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that each board member receives $200 per meeting.
Okay. Need a second?
You want it per meeting?
Yeah.
Do you all have a one meeting a month?
Yeah, that's right.
Except for a conference.
And we're not counting, talking about meeting people. We're talking about...
Yeah, and call me. I just want to make sure.
We meet people.
No, 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 that's why I'm, yeah, okay. All right.
Need a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second by Mr. Reese. All in favor? 0. So, superintendent, you can...
I will move forward. Thank you very much.
All right. Now, down to the July 13th, 2021 board meeting.
Okay. When we created our Board of Ed calendar, which we do in December, I had no idea if we were even going to have a GALE conference back then, because that was in the middle of the COVID mess where everything was closed and shut down. In fact, they just decided to have the GALE conference last month. But our board meeting in July is scheduled for the 13th of July, which is in the middle of the GALE conference. So, I could travel back. That's correct. But I would rather, if we could, move it back one week. And our favorite CFO, who is still threatening to retire at the end of this coming year, is going to be in a... is gonna be in a family wedding up in New York. And she promised she would not come back. So I'm asking if the board would allow us to move our July meeting to July twentieth as opposed to July thirteenth? Still meet the July requirement, but just moves it back a week. Does that cause anybody an issue on their calendar if we did that?
Not gonna be that, anyway.
On which one? Oh, okay. Now we have three reasons. Will you be in town for the twentieth, or are you still out?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good. We moved it so that you can be.
For you.
That's correct.
Appreciate it.
Need a motion to?
Yes, sir. Or a yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion, we move our July meeting to July the twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? Where's your one?
Okay, the community cannot see this name. But we have a student requesting to attend school in Lincoln County. This student is currently in another county in Georgia. They live close to here, but they want to come to Lincoln County. And they want to be enrolled in Lincoln County. Now, in the past, other than board approval, if they're in Georgia, they, we don't charge tuition. So Mrs. Arthur has done her due diligence and checked and made sure that everything checked out. And we heard positive things about the student. So Mrs. Arthur and I are both recommending that we allow this family to bring their child to Lincoln County Elementary School.
And we will be getting FTEs for this student?
We will, because they're still within Georgia. If they're not in Georgia, like they come from South Carolina, then we would charge tuition to cover the FTE. So that's the purpose. Thank you.
That was gonna be my question.
I knew it, with your mind.
Make a motion.
Need a second? A second by Mr. Madison, that we accept this student that's gonna be joining our elementary school upcoming year.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Where's your one?
Okay, the next one down is policies. We have two policies for revision tonight. One of them is the honors policy. Of course, this is the first read. This is pretty long. What we did is tried to revise and recreate this policy. Now, understand when you're changing a policy, as large as this is, it affects graduation, salutary and valedictorian, number of credits, the points that a child earns. All of those things, when you make that change, you have to make that change so that it only affects incoming freshmen. You can't make that change in mid-year and say, you were gonna be valedictorian, but now you're not because we changed the rules on you. You can't do that to the students, and you sure don't want to. So this is gonna affect, the changes are gonna affect, beginning with the class of twenty twenty-five. And you can see the highlighted differences, but the seniors who possess a numeric value of ninety-six or higher would be recognized as summa cum laude distinction. And that mirrors ninety-nine percent of the colleges. They use the summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude as their advanced students. We also are looking at the changes of following the courses. The following courses are considered advanced or honors courses and will carry a five weighted points to help achieve equality for students enrolled in more rigorous courses, dual enrollment, degree level weighted core courses as calculated by GSFC. Michael, GFSC is Georgia.
Student Finance Committee.
Student Finance Committee, which comes off of the HOPE Scholarship. So we're aligning ourselves with the HOPE Scholarship to make sure that there's not a question of whether these should be counted or not. Now, dual enrollment, degree level weighted courses, as you go to that chart, you can see they're still weighted at ten points. All AP courses at ten points. Honors, Algebra II, et cetera, you're looking at the five points. As you slide down, you're looking at the summa cum laude, magna cum laude. You see, summa is ninety-six, magna is ninety-three, which is very similar. One of the changes in summa cum laude, however, is in the past, we have had two advanced placement courses or dual enrollment. For summa cum laude, it's two advanced placement courses. And there's a lot of conversation within our own teachers and across the state that advanced placement has greater rigor than dual enrollment. And a lot of our teachers feel that advanced placement should be above dual enrollment. So in the summa cum laude, we've added that you must take two advanced placement courses to achieve that level of summa cum laude. Now, you can obviously take dual enrollment as well, but you gotta take at least two. You can take more than that, but you gotta take at least two. As you move down to information in valedictorian, salutary. The valedictorian and salutary must have attended Lincoln County High School for three full years of the four years of their high school career, including their senior year and full year as defined as being enrolled on the first day of the Board of Ed calendar. That remains the same. For graduating classes of twenty twenty-five and beyond, the valedictorian shall be the student who has obtained the highest four-year weighted average in all subjects and, at a minimum, has met summa cum laude criteria. For graduating classes of twenty-five and beyond, the salutary shall be the student who has obtained the second highest four-year weighted average for all subjects and, at a minimum, has met the summa cum laude criteria. If no graduate has obtained summa cum laude, then the valedictorian shall be the student who has obtained the highest four-year weighted average in all subjects and, at a minimum, has met magna. And you understand what happens there if everybody decides not to take the two. And I don't think that's gonna happen at all, but we had to put it in there just in case. The next page down on page nine, it says, in case there's no significant statistical difference. That's the same as it was before. We did not change that piece, it's just highlighted. So those are your highlighted changes in the honors policy. The next policy down that is revised, and again, remember, these are first readings, so they'll lay on the table for thirty days like we always do. The next one in release time is the name of that policy. The only change is it used to say when, I'm sorry, move on when ready, and now it's dual enrollment. So that was the only change to bring that up to date. The next policies down, which are personnel records, communicable diseases, hospital homebound instruction, expulsion, video surveillance. And communicable diseases, there's two of them, two different names there. One's G A N A and one's G C, I'm sorry, J G C C. All of those are just for review. So that's your policy updates for tonight.
Can we ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So what you're telling us is the college classes are easier than the AP classes? Is that?
Based on rigor and difficulty, yes, that's what they're telling us. That the AP classes have more rigor, that's what they're telling us. I'm sure that's based on the college that they go to. I know that our students that went to East Georgia compared to GMC, compared to other schools, they're comparing that as a challenge, some are more challenging than others.
And what did you say, the main reason why we're going to this? The HOPE College, it aligns with?
Well, it aligns the courses that are receiving the additional weighted points are aligned with the HOPE Scholarship. So if the HOPE Scholarship changes and says that a class is more important and it needs to be added, that's coming from them, and it keeps us in line with them. Currently, as the reads now, we are not in line with them. So that's why, one of the reasons we're updating.
One more question. Right now, just take Algebra II there.
Sure.
Right now, if you take it in high school, is that five points, or is it no extra points?
If it's honors Algebra II.
We don't have honors.
Right now, it's just Algebra II.
Right now, it's just Algebra II.
So it's no points?
No, it's five points for every single kid that goes through Algebra II at Lincoln County High School.
There it is.
And now we're fixing, we're gonna make it ten points, and we're putting honors.
No, no.
That's not what it said on.
We're gonna make it five points.
And if your child takes regular.
And it's honors. And if your child takes regular Algebra II.
They don't get the.
They'll get no points. Currently, the way it's written, they're taking regular Algebra II and getting five points.
Every kid in the building that takes Algebra II gets five points.
Now. Now.
So do they offer it?
Eighth grade, Algebra II.
So do we offer honors Algebra II?
We're going to next year.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I thought I heard that right.
That won't change anything for next year's tenth, eleventh, or twelfth. Every kid in that building for the next three years will continue to get the five points, whether it says honors or not. That will only apply to this incoming ninth grade class.
Correct.
You know, it makes a difference if you move and change schools, I'm aware of that.
It does.
Katie Britt, that happened to her.
Yeah.
She didn't get credit for it, just because of the name.
Yes.
Well, our own Johnny Wise.
Same thing with him.
Would have happened to him if he would have been a valedictorian or salutarian status. He couldn't qualify because he was only here one year.
Yeah, but what hurt her was not having honors in front of the classes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not the amount of time.
Okay. Okay, that takes us down to the superintendent's report. And the first thing that I get to do is a CNA presentation. We did the comprehensive needs assessment, we actually met three times. In those three meetings, we had community members there, we had teachers there, we had students there. We had a number of folks in that meeting, or in those meetings, trying to help us understand what we can do to improve. How can we better ourselves? Because if we only take our own suggestions and not outside folks, we're not meeting the needs of the community. So why complete a needs assessment is pretty simple. You wanna get everybody's collective examination of the district, what you're seeing. And it also helps when you're not looking at it just from an educational standpoint. If you have nothing but an educational background, you're looking at it from an educational standpoint. If you didn't go to school to be a teacher or an educator, you have a different viewpoint. All of those different viewpoints help. We want folks that are not educators there to try and see through this. So any way that we can have a different angle to improve us, we're going to take it. The first thing we did was a SWOT analysis. So in other words, we asked our four groups to go through and identify the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats, which is where you get SWOT analysis from, and try and create a list at their table. And there was somewhere between six and ten at a table. Does that sound fair? Okay. Here's the strengths and the weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Some of them are community threats, as an example, like limited housing. Some of them are school threats that we're working on, such as no Head Start. Those kind of things we're trying to accomplish through other agencies and other help. Strengths, you can see, are a pretty good list. Weaknesses are also a pretty good list, but again, some of those we're trying to work on that are part of the community. After-school activities, sports and tutoring was listed as a weakness. Not sure where that was coming from. Teacher and coach recruitment, that is a challenge everywhere in the U.S., and we're feeling it here as well. So as we go through all of those things, we try to analyze what we can do to combat those and how we can improve. Opportunities were pretty obvious for some, Fort Gordon as an example. Outside resources, community support is huge here, as we all know. Land available for housing, a lot of great things for opportunities as well. The lake is mentioned there also. So we know where we live, that portion of it, we feel pretty strong about, but there's some pieces there that we are gonna continue to work on to try to improve. As you go through this piece, they wrap everything around the whole child. So you go through these different slices of pie, everything's centering on the whole child. The first one is coherent instructional system. Now, one of the biggest things in the coherent instructional system is equity based on equality. If you look at the one on the left, everybody is equal because everybody got the same-sized box, or everybody got the same thing. The problem is, with everybody getting the same thing, that doesn't always work. You can see the little young man on the far right, he couldn't see because he needed more height, more help. The gentleman on the far left didn't have any trouble seeing without a box. So the difference between equality and equity. This is the standards keys. As we go through this, you'll see these acronyms, or your favorite, you love acronyms. You'll see these acronyms listed next to the standard. AMR as an example, allocation and management of resources. Government's pretty easy to understand. Planning, organization, and monitoring, that one caught me off guard right at first. Learning and teaching, and then leader, teacher, and staff effectiveness. So as we go through these, you'll see how those apply. But this system is part of the planning and delivery, the monitoring student progress, refining instructional systems. This particular system is the what and how of instruction. As you look at those standards, one through six, or one, two, three, and six, learning and teaching is all four of those. And you can see that we fell in their rating as operational, as we did in the prior rating in FY twenty-one, we're still operational. The next level would be exemplary, right, exemplary. Now, the second piece is effective leadership, creating and maintaining a climate of culture, conducive to academic success. Again, you can read the slide, but just trying to make sure that the leadership not only is effective, but creating a strong learning environment. This is that major support necessary for the instructional guidance. You can see all of the standards that are up there. See all those beautiful acronyms everywhere over there? We have exemplary in the first two, operational, exemplary again, and then it goes totally operational. So all of those are out of the different, or all four teams. Team one didn't obviously get a chance to finish because we've got one, two, three, four, five that were not rated. But that gives you an idea that we are operational at a minimum. And exemplary in four, which is pretty good, in my opinion, but we can always improve. Professional capacity, attracting staff is a challenge here, always. Retaining staff is not that much of a challenge, we're doing much better in that, but it's tough to come back for a young kid that can go over to Columbia County and make ten to twelve thousand dollars more just by walking through the door. That's part of what we are challenged by. Is a major, professional capacity is a major system of a complex school organization that develops a quality staff to reduce the variance. You can see in this, there's four standards, and we are operational and exemplary. So we did pretty well in this department. Everybody rated that department. And we have the family and community engagement. This is, in some areas, very, very easy for us because our community gets involved. Our community supports our school system very, very well. Trying to get them to come out to a Title I meeting, as an example, is a challenge every year I've been here. But for other things, they're definitely here and do a great job of supporting us. You can see the standards here, there's five of those. We are exemplary in two and operational in three, which, again, is a very positive rating. Maintaining order and safety, which is, this is supportive learning environment and ensuring a student learning community. This is something that we work on first. Student safety is always first, and then trying to provide that learning environment is something that we work on every day, try to improve on. We're exemplary in two, we are operational in one. Next steps, what do we do after we've done all of this? We determine the root causes and identify the needs as best we can out of all of the conversation and all of the data that we've taken. We select interventions on how to attack that. Then we create a district plan. As we create that district plan to try and improve over the next three years, from that, the schools create their school improvement. from that, the schools create their school improvement plan, which assists the schools to meet their needs and also meet the district plan. We get approval from the State Department for our plan, and then we implement our plan. From that, we continue to move forward and try to improve the school district. But that is a very positive, in my opinion, a very positive report, but also a very positive process to get information from our community. You were a part of it this year. Would you like to add something to that? Not to put you on the spot. Sorry about that.
Doc Gumbey did a great job of implementing it. You could have spent a whole week or two on it, really. I mean, it's very in-depth and it asks for a lot of information. And really, like I said, you could have spent a week or two on it. And they did a great job.
The dean of education for GMC was invited and attended the CNA this year. And we had a minister from within the community that attended. And both of them, at different times, told me they had no idea of the complexity that was in this process or was in the school system and how happy they were with being part of it, but also the result.
Yeah. Yeah, y'all jumped through a lot of hoops to do your job, you know? And I don't know how many of them actually are effective or not. But I commend y'all on it. I mean, really, there's a lot of moving parts that the federal and state levels ask for. And it's amazing how y'all actually teach these kids. I mean, most of them are smart when they leave here. But I commend you on them because it's a lot of work. It's, people, like I said, they don't realize, they don't have a clue.
They sure don't.
It's always greener on the other side. If you go over there where they are, pretty tough. I don't know about you now. That is joking.
I also have two acknowledgements for our folks. The lady that's trying to depart has an award of distinction of excellence. Our CFO has received an award of distinction of excellence in financial reporting. So congratulations again. Do you know how many years you've received that? It'd be easier to say how many you didn't, which would be the one year you got the findings since I've been here.
Don't mention that.
But in other words, you've gotten it six years that I've been here, yeah. And then our food service received an award for being a hungry hero with what they did to feed all of the children throughout the pandemic and all of the children through the school year. They, again, jumped through hoops and met all of the requirements and got everything done. And their entire team received a number one hungry hero award. So congratulations to our food service. And that's all I have for here. We need to make the motion to go into executive session.
Need a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
All right, all in favor? Executive session, we shut down. Our meeting is back in the session with our executive session information. We received a resignation from Ms. Amy Tocar. Give a motion.
Make a motion. We accept it.
Second. Second by Mr. Heightman. All in favor? Four zero. Okay. We have a recommendation to hire Ms. Deanna Halls for substitute food service employment for twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Second by Mr.... Okay, all in favor? Four. All right. There's a recommendation to hire Ms. Jessica Barnes for substitute food service employee for twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'll make a motion. Want to do it?
Mr. Madison?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reese. All in favor? All right. Our recommendation to hire Ms. Caitlin Smallwood for the position of occupational therapist.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Madison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Heightman. All in favor? Four zero. And last but not least, there's been a recommendation for the supplements that was given to the board to be approved as they were stated and submitted.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Me? I'll make a motion.
Make a motion? Second by Mr. Madison. Y'all have a good night.